All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. If you would, please silence your phones. Any conversations, please take outside. Well, this morning, we have Brother Brent Williams with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Let's pray. Father, we just praise you and we thank you for everything. Every good gift comes from you. But during this time of Thanksgiving, I just pray that we could have an attitude of gratitude. But your word does say, what your will is for us is not just once a year for Thanksgiving, but to rejoice always, pray without ceasing, and in every circumstance, give thanks, for this is your will for us in Christ Jesus. So it's not based on Thanksgiving one time a year. It should be the hallmark of our lives. And I pray that over the court today in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one and tight under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Williams, thank you, sir. Well, once again, good morning and welcome. The time is 9:02. We do have a forum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioner's Court held on November the 12th, 2024. Were there any additions, deletions, or comments to the minutes?
Hearing now, Judge, I move we approve the minutes for Commissioner's Court regular meeting on November the 12th, 2024 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action to canvass the votes from the November 5th, 2025 general election. Ms. Lucky.
Good morning, Court. So I'm here today to canvass the votes for November 5th, 2024. We had a total of 38,747 ballots cast. That was 65.11% turnout, and I've attached the results behind that.
How does this turnout relate historically as far as numbers size?
It was about the same as 2020. We had about 2,000 more votes cast in '24 than 2020, but we had more registered voters. That made our percent a little bit lower. We had about 5,000 more registered voters than 2020. But historically, it's a little higher than normal. Ninety-three was, or ninety-one was the highest, the 70%, but we were up there. It was busy.
Court questions, comments?
Do you think that all of our voting vote centers were used accordingly?
I think so. I think everything went really well. We did the seventeen vote centers. Early voting was busy, which I was hoping for. Election Day was a little slower than I really thought. I thought we would hit at least 10,000. We did about 7,000, about eight thousand on Election Day. But I mean, everything, there was no lines, even early voting. We didn't have a lot of lines. Our biggest problem, early voting, the first three days, was everybody showed up the first three days, and our parking, I think, was the worst part. But other than that, we didn't have a lot of lines. So, I mean, and Bethel and Moore were low. They had a little over 100 each. But everybody else held about the same.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to you and your department, because everything sure went smooth, didn't hear about any problems, other than just minor problems. I know when I went voted, there was only, there was 40 or 50 cars out there, and we just walked right in, registered, went and voted. So, you guys, your department did a super job.
Well, thank you. It was everybody, and it was a group effort. And I think the Sheriff's Department, they really stood up to help. I mean, that helped out a lot, just having them there, too. So it was a big group effort.
When you say that from 2020 to 2024, we're down 5,000 registered voters, what is the cause on that?
We're up. We're up. We have more.
You have more?
Yeah, we have about 5,000 more than 2020.
More? I thought you said less.
No, we have more. But our percentage was down.
It's down because of more?
It was down one, because we had more registered voters now than we did then.
Okay. I thought you said less, and that had me confused.
No, sorry. If I did.
All under 18?
No, we had about 5,000 more registered voters this time, so we're hitting 60. Everybody was happy with it. It went well over there, so, I mean, we had a pretty good turnout. It took some weight off Athens, so I kind of looked at the numbers. The Malakoff, Crossroads people, they hit it. Payne Springs hit it. I didn't get a lot of Trinidans, but, so.
Dexie, Roddy.
Oh, you're welcome.
Interesting. Those numbers put us at about a 10% growth in registered voters, a little less than that, a little over 9% in that four years. And the reason I find it interesting is as a indicator of the increased population. We increased 9% in four months, I mean, in four years. But when you look at that, you could begin to look for indications of what our population is doing in that short period of time, is why I bring that up. And I want to echo what Commissioner McCam said. I got to be a part of, of course, the security on the boxes and everything. Ms. Lucky and her team of staff and the poll workers that we have in this county are fantastic. When, let's see, Tuesday night, all the ballots were in by 9:30.
I printed my last report at 8:57, so they were in before 9:00.
I was jumping back and forth, being told what to do. So I thought it was 9:30. But for one of the two largest elections we've had in recent memory, it was a fantastic operation. And Paul, we owe you a great deal in that. And your people, the individuals that man these polls, you think about it, and I've thought about this a lot, how many straight days did they work in early election? Twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve? Twelve-hour days?
The last week was 12-hour days. The first week was nine-hour days. But the last Monday through Friday was 12-hour days at the two locations, Seven Points and Athens.
These individuals put in a great deal in this, and we can't thank them enough, the judges, the workers, or anybody, so.
We got a good team.
Yes, you do. Court, any further comments? Entertaining motion?
I move to approve the canvas on the vote for November 5th, 2025 general election.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the canvas of the votes from the November 5th, 2025 general election as presented. Any further comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Item three is consider and take action on a resolution of support related to the city of Athens. And with us this morning, we have Ms. Borstad with the city of Athens to visit with us on this resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners Court. I do want to reiterate those statements, because I think the Elections Office is fantastic, and we have a very good relationship with them also, so, from a city standpoint. And the other thing I want to do is thank all of you, because we have formed relationships and partnerships on items over the past few years that I don't believe Commissioners Courts and the City Council have been able to do before, and that's remarkable, so thank you.
Well, believe me, thank y'all. It goes both ways, and we appreciate the council.
And I'm just buttering you up. This item on the agenda is a resolution of support to submit a request of funding to the state of Texas for our Athens Municipal Airport. So the important thing in the history on this is that the Commissioners Court, over the years, has supported the airport in several ways. The Commissioners Court assisted with a master plan funding opportunity several years ago. Also, I believe they assisted in the fiscal impact analysis of the airport, which is, for an airport here in Athens, is really a regional impact, not only to us, but Henderson County and even some of the surrounding counties. So I'm sure you all have the resolution in front of you. Basically, it's just supporting our request for funding to the state and showing that Henderson County is a partner with us on that request.
Court, questions?
I think it's important that the county support this, because I think it's vital for our growth. And I know, oh, six or seven years ago, the county did assist with the plans, and I don't think we have the last couple of years, but I think it's something that's important for the county and the growth of the county.
I agree. And the past couple of years have really been a struggle, because one of the things you may remember was the encore transmission line, which has kind of caused an issue as far as the development of the new runway. So we think we have a resolution on that, and now this is truly a blessing and a source of funding that potentially we could have. So I think the impacts would be substantial. I have a copy of that original impact study. If anybody would like to read it, it was done in 2017. But it wouldn't just be the city of Athens or Henderson County. It would really be a regional impact, jobs and capital investment.
Court?
How many flights or planes go out of there a day or a week?
So we look at it monthly. We actually have an operations tracker, and this last month, a lot of smaller planes, but we have about 50 operations, so that's a landing and a takeoff. I mean, 50, 500, sorry, add a 10, I mean, add a zero, yeah. But of course, the goal is to get larger planes and corporate jets and people that want to come here and invest and develop additional industrial and commercial projects.
One of the talking points, if many of you remember, Commissioner Giesemann was very active in this and actually said as a member, I think, or as, not as a member, but as a resource for the Airport Committee. And one of the things that he discussed of one of the immediate benefits would be the aviation support industry. He talked then of our location and the congestion that is in the more metropolitan areas, that there would be individuals and organizations willing to house their equipment, their air facilities, their air assets in Henderson County, using this to support, being that it's a 30-minute, you know, not even that, 15-minute hop to bring a plane to the Metroplex for someone to use. Not only that, there's been discussions of that maintenance support, and it's just one of the immediate impacts to the area, because that is the portion that would help directly from the operations of the airport, support jobs.
Right.
This has been going on since the mid-2000s. Been several. Excuse me, I have to take my own phone out. I thought I had it turned off. This is a long vision project that we've met many obstacles with. As you said, the power line was an issue. You know, the first portion of it was, we couldn't go any further south because of the state highway, immediately south. The EDC, over the last 20 years, has purchased property, getting us to this point, and getting the ability at the state that is vital to take this opportunity, I believe.
I think now is the time where we potentially have the support, both in the Senate and the House of Representatives, to do this, so.
And it's, as you said, it's a regional benefit.
Absolutely.
Not just in Athens, not just Henderson County. It will support the region. And does this resolution encumber any funding in the future? This is a support that we give to the Athens and their quest. Any further discussion or comments? Entertaining motion?
So I move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the resolution of support related to the city of Athens as presented. Any further comments? Ms. Borstad, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We appreciate the city very much. Any other comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. Moving to item four, consider and take action to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Athens for the Water Department donation as related to ARPA funding. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. And the resolution or the MOU? Okay. This is the MOU in agreement with the city of Athens regarding the water generators provided for the ARPA funding, as where Henderson County agrees to provide up to $69,950 as a donation to the city of Athens Utility Fund.
Court, what we have here in the backup is a resolution that was passed by the city of Athens, and why this has become before us is that, as you know, through our ARPA funding, we, one of our projects, a little over $4 million for emergency backup power for the water corporations in the county, immediately following snow bid of '21, we thought it very important to apply money. At that same time in '21, the city of Athens requested generator funding from TDM as hazard mitigation, about the same time in '21. As we're moving in parallel, you have TDM on one side, you have Henderson County on the other side, with ARPA moving through these water generation projects. TDM has been very slow to process these applications, I believe is the best way to put it. We've had this same discussion in our meetings, Wesley Trailer, with Trailer and Associates, our ARPA consultant, has talked at great length about it. What we're at now is that, right as we come to the finish line with ARPA getting everything awarded, TDM comes through with two generators for the city of Athens. And if many of you have been here, you know that as we have awarded the bids, we have made changes to the actual, what was requested, in removing generators from the ARPA program, so that we could, the city of Athens could utilize the TDM funding. And what this is, is this is putting in the record and having in place a memorandum of stating what those changes are and how much funding it saves us. And the 10% match that TDM requires, we are here today to provide to the city of Athens to procure those generators for Amois. Sometimes we get them confused. We talk about the city and water. The Amois facilities are operated by the city of Athens, and this is in conjunction to ensure that we don't run out of water in stormy times. So we have had Mr. Strong look these over and give us his input. Mr. Strong, if you'd like to come forward and give us any talking points?
You did a great job, Judge, recalling the history on this. And as you already kind of mentioned, part of this is the Generac substitutions that were part of the bid process. One of those changes happened at the acceptance of that bid, which was going to be item 13. After that, the bid was accepted. And then during the contract portion, the second TDM award happened, and that was item 12. And so we're able to do a modification order on that contract. That's a done deal. So both of those items have now been taken out. The city's taking care of it through the state funding with that 10% match with the substitute items.
Court, questions? I will add, and Ms. Vaughn, if you would, this action we're taking here is so that we obligate that 10% match as a part of the ARPA requirements, correct?
Correct.
Court, questions? Mr. Trailer, any input? For the record, he gave a thumbs up. All right. Well, any further discussions or comments? We have a motion with the judge's authorization signed.
I'll move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Athens for the Water Department donation through the ARPA funds with the county judge's authorization signed. Any further discussions? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item number five, consider and take action to approve amendment number one to the Level Five contract, senior agri-life building architectural services that are associated through the ARPA program. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, sir. So this is just an amendment for the contract for Level Five to have a fixed fee of $310,155.70.
Give that number again. And this also is related to the ARPA rules, correct?
Correct.
They have to be a set number to be obligated
Yes, sir.
by December the 31st of this year?
Yes, sir.
Court, questions?
So it means after December 31st, there'll be no other bills from Level Five?
There will be bills, but it just...
It's obligated up to that much?
Up to that much.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It sets a cap on it. And for those wondering, in the original documents, as we began this process with Level Five, it was on a as-needed basis. There was no set dollar amount. And when you look at this project, and the three times it had to go out to bid, and the couple of times it had to be redesigned, you understand why, that they write those initial portions in that fashion. But this locks down, now that we have the design, we have the award, now it moves into the construction phase, we have to have this final number for obligation purposes. Any other questions or comments? Entertaining motion with judge's authorization.
So I move to approve with the judge's authorization signed.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve amendment number one to the Level Five contract for the senior agri-life building architectural services related to ARPA with county judge's authorization signed. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor passes unanimously. Item number six, consider and take action on the award for the rifle-resistant body armor grant program, fiscal year 2025, from the office of the governor. Ms. Vaughn?
We were awarded from the office of the governor for the amount of $48,487.24 to purchase rifle-resistant body armor.
That number again, 48,000? And this body armor is different from our other programs. We run two programs. Our traditional one, that gets our bulletproof vests for everyone. This is a step up to rifle-resistant.
Correct.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. I appreciate the court helping us block this grant. We've had Rafa Lewis, the body armor, in the past, and actually, this is fire. And so this will get us back up to May, maybe, for five years, and still have their body armor that we use every day. And then if they go into a situation of need, this would be another test that we're going on topic to do.
How many will this get us?
I think it's going to cover, it will cover everybody on patrol, everybody that's out there, everybody answering.
Do we have to match any?
No, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
It's kind of like quick and easy.
Nothing's quick and easy, but it seems pretty straightforward, yes.
I'd like to motion to approve the award for the rifle-resistant body armor grant program, seconded to the office of the governor.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Tulley to accept the award for the rifle-resistant body armor grant program, fiscal year 2025, from the office of the governor, in the amount of $48,487.24 with no match. All those in favor passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number seven, consider and take action on request for reimbursement of hotel expenses from AgriLife Extension Service Agent regarding NAE for HYDP conference.
It is a mouthful.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, good morning, Commissioners and Judge. When I came to you back in June to request out-of-state travel to attend this conference, I submitted a PO request for my airfare and my conference registration. I did not submit a PO request for the lodging accommodations. As you may know, I serve on the National Board of the National Association of 4-HY Youth Development Professionals, which is NAE for HYDP. And the association made my hotel reservations, and I naively thought that by them making my reservation, that they were covering the expense of my hotel. And I did not find out until I was there and checking in that I was covering that expense. So upon return, I submitted my request for personal reimbursement for those, the hotel expenses, and since there was no PO, I am standing before you today to request reimbursement.
Ms. Vaughn?
I think she covered everything. There also isn't enough budget money remaining, so I have my money from elsewhere to cover this.
So within our departmental budget, there is money left unused in our... So within our departmental budget, there is money left unused in our postage account. We have about $1,500 that's unused there that I thought give us a little wiggle room as far as staying within our departmental funds.
What's the, I see here on the reimbursement, it's a total of $784.25?
Now, the part of that is mileage, and that was included in the original PO.
Okay, so it's the 675-18?
Correct.
Got you. And remind the court of this leadership position in the national...
Yes, so I serve as the Southern Region Director and editor of a national publication for the National Association of Extension 4-H Youth Development Professionals. So in my role, I was required to go a day or two in advance of the conference for board meetings and such to conduct business of the association. And so it's a two-year term. I will not always be on this board. And so I'm in my, just completing my first year of being on this, in this national leadership position. So I have one more year remaining.
We've always had a strong 4-H program, and we commend you for taking on this leadership position representing Henderson County at the national level.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Entertained motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for reimbursement of hotel expenses from AgriLife Extension Service Agent regarding the National, say that name again?
National Association of Extension 4-H Youth Development Professionals.
In the amount of $675.18. We can have that added in. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Sir, if you would, please remove your hat. Thank you. Item eight, consider and take action on interlocal cooperation agreement for contract for labor and equipment use between the city of Moore Station and Henderson County, ending December 31, 2026. Commissioner?
Yes, Court. Moore Station has asked for interlocal agreement on us to, for labor and equipment to do road patching, they'll pay for the material, brush cut, right of ways, mow right of ways, and you know, remove trees and stuff like that as they fall. Anything that takes labor and equipment for a two-year period, it'd be $5,000 for each year. And it'd be ending December the 31st of 2026. And we do this with all of our, most of all our cities. We've got interlocal agreements to help them out on labor and equipment.
Court questions? And this particular agreement, for contract agreement, is very beneficial to both because you can just go on a phone call and respond.
And I've let know all of them, you know, if we have anything else, like a major road repair or something, then we'll bring it back to court and do it on a different interlocal agreement on major jobs. This is just to cover the simple stuff, the everyday call-ins and stuff like that, so...
And it does help during emergencies as well.
Yes. Yeah, we had to have interlocal agreement for reimbursement through FEMA, so...
Court questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertained motion?
I'd like to make a motion to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement contract for labor and equipment with the city of Moore Station, ending December 31st of 2026, with the judge's authorization assigned.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement contract for labor and equipment use between the city of Moore Station and Henderson County, ending December 31, 2026, with the county judge's authorization assigned. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number nine is receive financial reports, of which we have none. Item number 10 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet, which there are none. Item 11 is consider and take action on submitted contracts, none. Item 12 is consider and take action on right-of-way, right-of-way permits.
No right-of-way.
Excuse me?
No right-of-way.
None, that's been, that's new. Item 13, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, we have none. Item 14, consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. We have a dispute here, 2024, in the amount of $231,423.97.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $231,423.97, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the bills in the amount of $231,423.97, as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action on submitted plats.
Yes, two plats, one in precinct one and precinct two, and all these are paid.
Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court, this is a piece of property that an individual is taking one lot and making two lots. There's, there is no POA or ACOA at this location, and there's already one or two there that's available.
Court questions? Hearing none, entertained motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the replat of lot 21, lot two, creating lots 21A and 21B for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the replat forest acres, plat number one, for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Court, this is a plat in Pinnacle Club. As you can see, the original lot line of lot 19 and part of lot 18 that this property owner owns, and they're wanting to combine part of 18 and all of 19 into lot 19-R. Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the Pinnacle Club replat of lot 19 and part of lot 18 in Phase Two, Section Two-F, creating lot 19-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Say that motion? Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the final replat, creating lot 19R in the Pinnacle Club, Phase Two, Section Two-F, for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item 16 is open and consider bids, of which we have none. And item 17, convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, in consideration of authorizing the county judge or other authorized officials to execute the settlement, participation, and release forms regarding settlement offers from Kroger in the matter of Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of Henderson County, Texas, versus Purdue Pharma LP at all MDL pretrial cause number 2018-63587, in the 152nd District Court of Harris County, Texas, removed to MDL 2401 ND, Ohio. Court, can we have a motion to move into executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session at 9:45.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to move into executive session at 9:45. Any further comments? All those in favor, passes unanimously. We will move into executive session.
The time is 9:18. Can we have a motion to reconvene into open session?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Tootley to reconvene into open session at 10:18. All those in favor, passes unanimously. We have returned to open session to consider and take action on matters discussed in the executive session. In the executive session, I won't read this whole deal, but it's where we were in consideration of authorizing officials to execute settlement participation and release forms regarding settlement from Kroger in the matter of the Texas opioid multi-district litigation for the county in the matter of Henderson County. Now there are multiple cases involved and it's something that we've been a part of for four years. This will be the 11th settlement offer that has been presented to the Commissioners' Court. We consulted with our attorneys and court, are we ready to proceed forward? If we are, entertain the motion.
I make the motion that we approve the order of resolution authorizing approval of proposed Texas statewide opioid settlement agreements against Kroger and Exhibit A. With a judge's signature.
Motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tootley to approve the order authorizing approval of proposed Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement with Kroger and the Exhibit A with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, passes unanimously. Item 19 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley and second by Commissioner Richson to adjourn at 10:21. All those in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.